I would like to welcome everyone to Warwickshire Cabinet. This is the 10th of September. I hope you've all had at least some rest in August, although it has been a different year. And most importantly, that you've kept safe and well. Can I first start by asking if I have any apologies?
Chair, you've had apologies from councillor Tims and also from councillor Atkins.
Right. Can I also ask everybody who is attending, please, if you would use the hand raise facility to intervene if you'd like to? I'd like to avoid using chat because it's not quite so obvious. And I don't like, I don't really like if there's public present. I don't really like saying, oh, someone said this in the chat. It feels as if there's another meeting going on. So I would like, if possible, you to raise your hand. If however, you are on a machine that doesn't have the hand raising facility, I will look in the chat as well and I will ask you to come in if that's necessary. I hope that's clear. Right, can I take us to item three, the previous minutes, please, which are on pages five to 24? I'm going to ask if there is approval for these minutes. I'm not going to go through them page by page as it's been a, it's been the way for the last few weeks when we've been on virtual. It's rather difficult to do so. So can I ask for approval of the minutes as printed five to 24?
Approved.
Approved. Thank you. And can I just ask you again to use the hand raising facility, please, for approval? Thank you. We have approval for, and I approve that, so that makes it unanimous. Can we then move on to the first item, pages 25 to 46?
Chair, sorry to interrupt you. Would you like to ask members declarations of interest, please?
I would. Yes, sorry, jumping ahead. Yes, could I please ask for any declarations of interest? And if you have them, please, could you raise your hand? Keith?
I'll just go mention I'm a borough councillor. I think we've got dispensation for talking about the, anything relating to that with the mergers and things or unitaries or whatever.
Sure. Could I ask Cam if you have got a council call?
Sorry, no, I haven't, Izzy. That's a historical hand.
A historical hand. And councillor Button.
Thank you, Chair. Item 13, my daughter-in-law works at Paddock School.
Thank you. Right, are there any other declarations of interest? I see no hands raised. Thank you. Thank you for that. And then can I move on to public speakers? Are there any, Paul?
Here we are. No, no Chair, no public speakers.
Right. Well, I've already started item two, so I will continue. Could I please ask the council plan 2020 to 2025, quarter one performance? Could you introduce that, please? I think that is Peter. Was it Cam? It's Cam, sorry, apologies.
That's okay. So as the organisation continues to perform, quarter one has been an improvement in overall performance compared to 2019, 2020 year end position. At quarter one, there are 41 KBMs available for reporting, which is 29 KBMs are on track, that's 71%. 12 are not on track and that's 29%. There's an improvement from the year end position in that 41%, that's 19 achieved target against 59%, 27 were behind target. Several measures have been impacted by COVID-19 pandemic. And this, the report highlights six measures which are of concern. And these are mentioned on page, on 2.5, page 27 of the report and have a detailed narrative and explanation as to why. And just to run through, just very quickly, Chair, if I may, number of children in care, excluding unaccompanied asylum seeking children, the percentage of children in care aged under 16 who have been looked after continuously for at least 2.5 years, who are living in the same placement for at least two years or are placed, percentage of carers, percentage of placements for adults in provision of good or outstanding quality. And then cost of send home to school transport provision. And lastly, number of days sick leave per FTE, that's full time employment rolling into 12 months. Just to also add that performance can be accessed through the links to Microsoft Power BI system if you want to drill down even further, Chair. But what I would also like to include is later, we're going to talk about the recovery paper. And in that, we talked about performance and the performance framework. So that too, you will notice going on into the year, we will be incorporating into the performance reporting as well. I'm happy to take questions, Chair, if there are any.
So thank you very much. I'm just looking to see if, right, councillor Gerry Rudhouse, please.
Thank you. This week with reports really all come together. Yeah, they're all sort of rolled into one another, as council calls indicated, the COVID-19 recovery plan as well. I note within this report, an item to the commissioning intentions framework, which is being adopted as well, which links through and setting up on the dashboard. And I was wondering whether you'd be willing to take on board, actually, for these, it might be worthwhile having a small cross-party working group that could work on the dashboard with officers to allow that Power BI to become more effective than it is really. That's point one. The other point is I welcome that some of the changes in indicators, some have been taken off and some put on. And I noticed the changes such as we have suicides now being put on as an additional measure, which I think items like that are going to be needed sadly more during this phases going forward. But I think with this item, with the performance, it might be worthwhile having a small group, you know, three, four people that could actually work quite quickly with you to develop the dashboard with officers to make sure that you can drill down as effectively from a member's perspective.
Chair, would you like me to answer that? Or would you like to take a few? There, I've got, I've got one, two, three other speakers. Do you want to collect them and then, or would you like to answer that now?
Just Gerry's made some good points and I think the COVID recovery worked really well. The task and finish groups that we had, we had 12 in total. And I think it's been really valuable piece of work. And I think it'd be a good idea if we were to have this going forward, especially as we work through the recovery plan, linking into, as I said, this paper's going to be changing and evolving all the time. So I think having members, as Gerry's mentioned, to work with would be a good idea.
Thank you, thank you, Cam. Yes, I agree. I think there's, it's in the interests of us all to have a hands-on effect here. So perhaps we can move that forward and you can take that on in discussions with officers and colleagues. I'm going to ask Les Kayborn next, followed by Dave Parsons, followed by Keith Condecor. Les, please.
Yes, just to respond to, as we say, the adult social care in care homes is below target. Just to reassure members really that our quality assurance team is back and our social team is back to normal working in this area. So we're doing a deep dive into these figures and into a care homes. Of course, care home assessment is with the CQC, so we are going to have some time lag in them getting back and inspecting our homes and see where they go. But we are aware of that. So we're doing far more weekly calls, virtual visits and far more onsite monitoring is applicable or virtual mounting of our care homes through our quality team to assure that we are on top of this and moving it forward, not waiting for anyone else. But just to, on the other side of that, our permanent admissions to residential or nursing homes is well ahead of target. So it's very good performance, as is our permanent admissions to residential nurses. So despite the increased demand because of COVID, we've still been successful in keeping people in their homes or better placements than been in a care home. So we need to congratulate our staff for that. But we are well aware of the problem and digging into it and getting on with it, Chair.
Thank you very much, councillor Kayborn. Councillor Dave Parsons, then councillor Keith Condecor and Geoff Morgan to follow. Dave, can I bring you in?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to actually support what Gerry had said about the cross-party working group on the dashboard and to thank Cam for her recognition of that. I think the initial draft document that came out was rather light on measurable attainment and what were going to be the success criteria. It has been hardened off and that's a big improvement. And I think actually to have the cross-party working group on the dashboard will really make that a valuable exercise. So thank you for that.
Thank you very much. Can I move to Keith, please? Keith Condecor.
Thank you. These dashboards and KPIs are really very useful. They really do get things moving and also differentiate between us promising to do something and actually then getting there. So I'm very keen on us having some for cycling. We've got some new standards for cycling and I love us to have a KPI in the dashboard for how many miles a cycle route we build each year, because that would actually measure progress. Now, we put lots of money into it. The engineers do a lot of design work and it'd be really good to have a measurable number and make sure our numbers grow quicker than Coventry's. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, yeah. And that would be interesting, actually, yeah. And Geoff next, Geoff Morgan, please.
Thank you. On the number of children in care, I mean, it's true that we are above the target, but the important thing for me is to make sure that we've got the right children in care. It is useful to have a target, but I don't think I would want to be hung, drawn and quartered on that alone. We've seen no increase in the number of children coming into care. What seems to be happening at the moment is that they're being kind of stuck, they're not coming out the other end of the machine. And that's partly a COVID thing. There have been delays with court orders, et cetera. So I think there are reasons for this and I'm not terribly worried about the fact that we're a bit above target on that at the moment.
Yes, thank you for that. I know that, I know there have been some great delays in courts too, in the criminal courts. So I presume the family courts haven't been sitting for the same reason, which is COVID.
That's right.
How frustrating. Right, no more speakers. So Cam, it's back to you to round off.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to just pick up on the key business measures and the performance measures interlinked with each other really. But what I'm looking at is really making these key business measures really meaningful and really want them to be linked in with the recovery and what we have currently. So I want them to work and align with each other so that going forward, it makes performance in a more clear, transparent and consistent way. So I move the recommendation. What I will do is work with officers to set up the meetings and we'll go from there, Chair, if that's okay. So the recommendation is set out, it's to consider and comment on the progress of the delivery of the council plan 2020-25 for the period as contained in the report. Agree the proposed changes to the commissioning intentions framework.
Thank you, Cam, very much. And I'm asking Cabinet to raise your hands if you approve that report, please. My hand doesn't work. Yes, it does. Slow, it's a bit slow. That looks unanimous to me. Thank you very much. And thank all the other colleagues for their comments, please, which have been very helpful. And we will move forward, particularly Gerry, on the one that is looking at cross-party working group. Can I move on to item three, please, which is 2020 and 2021 quarter one budget monitoring report? And it's councillor Peter Button, please.
Thank you, Chair. This is the first quarter report on budget monitoring. It seems a long time since we set the budget way back in February. An awful lot seems to have happened to us and mainly the COVID-14 situation. But I kind of buoyed up by this report and my thanks go to the finance offices in bringing this forward in terms of being able to kind of react really well to the COVID crisis, to the extent that the overspend with, on the first quarter is 3.364 million. And our savings that have not been kind of implemented is only 2.995. The, this is basically kind of gives a good indicator as to how financially viable and sound Warwickshire County Council has been going into this crisis and put us in good stead for the future. The, if you look on page, there's a chart on page 50, which kind of highlights and tanks out what was kind of noted as COVID impact. And also then kind of strips out that and kind of leaves you with kind of what the pressures, underlying pressures to our services have been when COVID is taking out. The three areas which kind of have significant impact. One is the high needs block where we've got an overspend of 11.7 million. Now, I must point out, this is kind of a rollover because there's 5 million from the previous year. And as you know, the government has made a complaint that they will not allow us to basically kind of write off any kind of overspend from this section. So it has to be cumulative. So that's why it's 11.7 million. I think most members have had briefings and brought up to date on what we're doing about this in terms of this high needs block. But needless to say, the lady that we've brought in to kind of sort this problem out has got a kind of a three to four year problem in terms of bringing that down. So it is one of the big glaring black holes at the moment. But as everybody knows, we are now kind of on top of that and we've got a program in place to sort it out. The second one was children's placement budgets, which is kind of an overspend on it. And this is, although it's not itemized as COVID related, it is actually COVID related because there has been an inflation due to COVID on those placement costs. So although it's stripped out as a kind of an underlying pressure, the COVID crisis has an impact on those placement costs. And thirdly, the business support structure has also highlighted issues around the actual level of budget available to support the new model. Again, this has been undertaking a review and also kind of highlighted the fact that there wasn't enough revenue there to support the new model. So that's been dealt with as well. In terms of capital expenditure, if you draw your attention to, here we go, page 57. What we've done is, on the page 56 is a chart that shows our capital expenditure, where the deficits and increases have been. And also it itemizes later on where we need to borrow money for it. But I must point you to page 57, which rekindles, sets out the reasons why we get expenditure and everything. And it's kind of put into three sections, re-profile projects, new projects, project spend and underspend projects, which itemizes instead of basically kind of slippage or overspend, it's basically more nuanced and people can see the reasons why those overspends or underspends occur in those capital projects. So the other one, there's a report on reserves, which is saying that kind of as a slot, a dip in our reserves, but then you would expect it for when you consider what's happened and that is what reserves are for. And we're already kind of reassessing our risks, risks involved in our reserves as well at the same time. On that matter, I'm willing to kind of leave it at that and ask for any questions. But I must congratulate the officers and also foresight to make sure that we've got enough reserves to kind of deal with the crisis that's befell us. And that's what reserves are for. So I'm willing to take any questions.
Thank you, Peter. I've got one hand up at the moment. If anyone else wants to nudge your moment, Keith Condecor, please, and then Gerry Rudhouse.
Thank you. Looking at the massive appendix on the capital projects, we seem to be slipping again on projects, probably due to lack of resources. It's the design services. We've got so much we're trying to do that we're actually not getting stuff done. I noticed the Leamington to Kenilworth cycle route is slipping, which will then probably mean all of our other cycle ambitions are slipping. Secondly, we've still got Bermuda connectivity on there, the Bermuda Bridge project, which is slipping a year every year. It's been going about six or seven years, that project. We should really scrap it. It's with the COVID changes, it's less and less relevant to add capacity. And the final thing is on Knuckle, there's just one line on Knuckle in the appendix. And I've just discovered we've paid almost a million pounds to Coventry City Council for the extra platform at Coventry City Station. And it's not on any of this stuff. It's not been delivered by Coventry City Council. We've not invoiced them for the million pounds back yet. And because it's outside our system, it's not being tracked. And it's critical to get in the Eton Bedworth corridor and food to get that bay platform. So I do hope that things, when we pay someone else to do something like Coventry City Council, it stays on our system. Thank you.
Yeah, Keith, thank you for those points. I'll bring Peter back in at the end, but some of those are a bit specific to schemes which it may be others want to come in, but I'll leave it with Peter for the moment. Gerry next, then Dave Parsons, please. Gerry?
Thanks, yeah, just a quick one really. As you say, the report is what it is, you know, COVID has knocked all the finances around so that it's not a true reflection as in a normal year. And probably we won't see that for the next couple of years going forward. I did note the town centre money in environment and the amount that that cost through. But it's on page 65, it's about the risks and the number of forecasts to carry out risks and the volatility of demand really. And I didn't know whether the portfolio holder could just explain a little bit more about that volatility and what we think the potential biggest two risks are going to be.
Thanks, Gerry. Dave Parsons, please.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for your report, Peter. I'm just wondering if we know any more about the comprehensive spending review yet? I mean, we're told that sort of austerity is over and that it's hard to see how local government is going to escape, as it were, the eventual clawback. And I think one of the things that's really crucial is that we somehow or other, our finances become more sort of regularised and better essentially. I didn't know whether you'd had any information perhaps on when we might be getting the comprehensive spending review and whether there's any sort of readings about the direction it might take really.
I think, Dave, it's, we haven't got a date. It's in the autumn, October. I'm not sure. Peter might have a bit more detail. I know the LGA, they haven't yet submitted their paper to the comprehensive spending review. So I think we're a little way off yet, but you know, it's the autumn. So no specific date, I think. Thank you. Geoff, can I bring you in? Geoff Clark, followed by Peter.
Thank you, Leader. Yeah, just picking up on a couple of points there, particularly in relation to the Knuckle project. Obviously, that's really important to us. This has been raised with Coventry City Council and government insofar as helping to deliver that scheme. Government are quite particularly interested because it hasn't yet been delivered and they are going to have to come back with some more funding. I know also that Peter, as deputy leader, is in the process of setting up another meeting with Coventry City Council and these, re-establishing the Knuckle Project Board to ensure that that progress does continue. I know it's been very slow and it's frustrating for everyone, but it's critical to a major scheme, both on the Knuckle project and to the wider, wider region. Just going on to the Bermuda project, that is currently out for tender. It's, again, it's important to the transport in and around the Eton. I really feel that is a project that must be undertaken. I know other members might not agree with that course of action, but we've already identified that that's really needed to that side of town to enable progress in those areas. And I think there was one other point where, and I forgot what it was, I'm too apologised.
The cycle way?
Cycle ways, yes. The, yeah, sorry, just remind me what the point was.
The Leamington.
Kind of was the Leamington one, yes. Obviously, that slipped principally due to COVID. And as you rightly identified, we were down on planning officers. That situation is being addressed and interviews are ongoing now, in actual fact, to replace some roles or put new roles in place, should I say, to make sure that we are able to deliver. Capacity is an issue. We do have other schemes that come along, which are low hanging fruit that we have to try and fit in as well as our own projects as well. But those, those issues will still progress and we continue to develop those. But we are, in relation to the Kenilworth to Leamington one, it's critically important to us and we will see it being delivered as soon as possible. Thank you, Chair.
You do. Thanks very much, Peter. I've got no more hands up, so it's back to you, please.
Yeah, well, I'll just, I think Geoff has basically kind of filled in on most of those things that Keith reluded to. But I must point out with the Leamington to Kenilworth scheme, that was always going to be kind of a difficult one to get in place because there's a lot of HVE engineering and also land acquisition costs. So when you get involved with compulsory purchase of lands, you're kind of, you can almost write off 18 months just on that one subject alone. So, but in terms of it holding up other schemes, no. If the other schemes come forward and are easily put up, they will overtake it. It will not in itself overtake, kind of hold up any other schemes we've got in the pipeline. Gerry, in terms of the town centre scheme, I think there is, yes, we have spent more money than we received from the government on this one. I think it's something in the region of, I might be wrong, but I think it's somewhere in the region of about just over 200,000 above what we receive from government. But there is another bidding and we don't know what the consequence of that one is yet. So we might not be out of pocket quite so much as we think. The income loss is one of the major risks and we are monitoring that and that will go forward over the next two years in terms of our budget setting. So yes, I agree, that is one of our major risks, income loss. In terms of tax, it's for the first time, I think Virginia said, when we were talking about it, it's the first time where we will actually see a reduction, no increase in our tax take. And as the furloughing kind of ceases at the end of October, more redundancies will kick in. With more redundancies, our tax take also reduces because then they don't have to pay council tax. So we are unsure of our income going forward for those very reasons. Hopefully, the Warwickshire economy is buoyant enough to kind of bounce back quicker than most others. So, but we keep our fingers crossed that we're on that one. And as per usual, Warwickshire kind of plans for the worst and hopes for the best, a policy which I always think works. And as per usual, Warwickshire kind of plans for the worst and hopes for the best, a policy which I always think works well for us. The Dave group spending review, yes, we are both all kind of looking, kind of looking for a date on this one. But I can say this will be in the autumn. I know CCM and LGA are still kind of putting in information, as is all the counties themselves, to local central governments as to what ought to be in that comprehensive spending review. We would like a three-year review in terms, so as we get a settlement. But it's unlikely, well, the smart money is saying it'll be a one-year settlement after that spending review. But we would much prefer a three-year spending settlement so as we can plan adequately off into the future. And I think that's all the questions that are received.
That's, yep, that's it.
On that point, I would commend that one to the Cabinet for approval.
So I'm taking you on page forty seven. There's recommendations, I'm not going to read them all out. We've got A, B, C, D and E as printed. And I'm asking for approval from Cabinet members for that. I think that I can confirm that we have got a unanimous approval for that. Thank you very much, Peter. Okay, so the next, the next item was a supplementary paper which came to members. And this is the item four, which is the Covid nineteen recovery plan. You should have had that received afterwards. I just wanted to introduce that briefly, if I may. So I'm presenting the paper, which I firstly must thank. This was started from the Cabinet meeting in June. On the eleventh of June, we had three Cabinet papers which were critically important to moving forward on the next step to recovery from Covid. These were the overview of the Warwickshire County Council Recovery Approach, the place shaping and the economic recovery. As a result of those, we set up four working groups, which a number of cross-party members have all taken part in. And I really want to thank everyone for turning around those. There was a lot of work to be done in a very short period of time. And not only members who were very much engaged, but it was the turnaround of officer time as well, which has produced the paper that we have before us now. I know that there have been some input from members since then, so it's been tweaked a little bit. And what we now have before us is a plan to progress our recovery for the next six months. In particular, that will start the process going. But I want to say that actually it works to our local, to our corporate plan. And it is absolutely critical that what we do do is start this recovery of our organisation, of the way we work with our communities and also of our partners as well. They have all been involved in the engagement with this, so I would also extend thanks to that, to them. We've had staff surveys which have added to it and we have had community engagement as well. All of that in a pretty short turnaround time. It's absolutely important that what we do do is continue to engage with communities, with residents and with our partners to make this recovery something that has good, solid legs for it. I'm going to, actually, I'm going to stop there and invite members to question and come back to it, come back to those questions afterwards. So I'm starting with Colin, Colin Hayfield, Cam Corr, Les Kayborn, Keith Condeco. Thank you.
Sorry, Izzy, that was a misleading hand.
Oh, was it? Right, okay. So it's Les Kayborn and Keith Condeco. I think you're on mute, Les.
Yeah, thank you, Leader. Thank you, Leader. I just want to thank the members of my group, because we had a very constructive group. And although we had a lot of words, they are naturally shortened in this in this report. But the essence of everything we did and discussed is in this report. And I'm delighted that, you know, number one, two and four are within within the work of my group, although other groups added to it. And although there are very few words. Number two, looking at resilient social care services and strengthening the care market is not a five-minute job. That's a two or three-year project. And so this recovery is going to take a lot of effort and a lot of work on everybody's behalf to see it through. And I know very well, this authority will see it through.
Thanks very much. Keith, followed by Cam, followed by Andy Crump.
Thank you very much. I mean, a lot of the stuff we've done, particularly the Public Health Yorkshire has been very, very good. And we've got an awful lot still to do. It's like going into World War One. People say it's over by Christmas, but you don't know which Christmas. And sadly, cases have started to go back up. So it's impossible to know how much work we've got to do. But I'm really impressed by some of the work the Public Health Yorkshire have done. Particularly more recently, I think they've got up to speed and allows management managing better than a lot of the other authorities. On the recovery plan, it mentions climate change quite a bit and there's an awful lot we've got to look forward to in terms of things to do. The climate change disaster will be bigger than the Covid disaster. And we see some of the dreadful pictures from California. So I'd really like to really emphasise we have to do this at the same time and it's not something we do afterwards. And we have to do it well, you know, where it's this tree planting, it's not just one or two trees. We need a serious campaigning. We need to plant the right trees. Because if you plant the wrong trees, you can drive things out and make things worse. So we need a well-planned climate exchange plan. And we do need to actually start moving away from people buying SUVs and things. We can do quite well as a county council, but there's actually good things and bad things happening at the moment. I really do think we need to reinvest in more public transport, cycling and walking. And that's in the plan. What's not in the plan is reducing the amount we spend on road building. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Keith. And I just on those points, I would just take you to three point one on the report, which picks up the points that Keith's talking about on climate change and also those priorities on recovery. Cam, followed by Andy, followed by Gerry.
Thank you, Chair. I'm trying to look at the report and look at the screen at the same time. I just wanted to take this opportunity to, one, thank everybody who was on my panel and worked alongside me in the Organisation Committee and also our officers. Because, you know, to do, put this together in such a short time was incredible. And given, you know, it was a lot of work to get through. We've already touched on the performance, which was touched in organisation, which was in mine. And Gerry's picked up on that as well and we definitely will work together. But what I also wanted to talk about was the importance of community. This is really Heather's portfolio, but I feel we're interlinked the hip a little bit on this. So I just wanted to pick up on community and the work that the communities have done during the pandemic and are still doing. And how much we need to be involved with them and how we can work with them going forward as well. So, you know, we really do need to have a KDM around the communities and how that works for us and how that drives our agendas going forward. Admittedly, around climate change as well, Keith touched on that. But I think there's a lot of work here. Although it's only about ten pages, there is a lot of work for us to get through. And I think people need to be mindful of that, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Cam. Can I bring Andy Crump in then? Gerry.
Thank you, Leader. Just very briefly, again, I'd like to echo Council Kayborn and Council Course comments about great help and support obviously from members to my group. Everybody parted, participated in good spirit and came up with some great suggestions. Again, echoing Council Course comments about the voluntary community groups that stood up and were really helpful, providing us with community intelligence, some intelligence that we hadn't been able to get before. It's given us evidence for which we can make decisions on to get our communities remove the isolation, get them back to our town centres, to revitalise them, to get our economy grounds and for making it safe for them to do so. Also, I pointed out that Warwickshire Fire and Rescue Service is going to be subject to an inspection by HMICFRS about its response to Covid nineteen. And undoubtedly, I think we'll get a really glowing response because our firefighters from all levels have stood up and really gone above and beyond. So I'd commend their works and actions and send a big thanks to all who work in Warwickshire Fire and Rescue. Thank you.
Yeah, I really would endorse those comments. The fire service have gone out of their way to do a lot of support to people who have been isolated too. And I think we need to vote thanks for that. So thank you. Gerry.
Yeah, I'd echo all the comments about fire service, community and those points made. And also just the point about the working groups. I think the survey back on appendix fees, you know, ninety-four percent felt that the working group model should be used again in the future. I think is an endorsement of that process and the way that it was done on quickly. And paragraph five, which is timescales and next steps, really. And I suppose I'm just echoing the bit that I said at the start of Cabinet meeting. But I do note on five point five and five point six about the alignment to child poverty, strategy, health and wellbeing and those cross-cutting strategies and ensuring that we're picking those up. And then, of course, I won't say much more about five point six, what may be happening in January. And who knows, we might all be in court or Boris might be, well, I don't know on there. But I mean, that's the unknown. But I think for us at our level, it is about ensuring that cross-cutting is working, going on. And I think, you know, Council of Course, right, if we can then make the key business measures sort of reflecting that across as well. I think we could have a really good model.
Yeah, I'll wrap up in a minute. I've just got Jeff Clark, please.
Thank you, Leader. Yeah, I mean, obviously, the list has been put together by officers and members, giving a lot of information here. It's not exhaustive and obviously it's going to develop as we move through this period. So that there is opportunity to reshape or to ensure that whatever we need to do is done. I mean, we're in a good position in Warwickshire to be able to actually address a lot of the issues as they arise. But there is more work to do and this is a start of potential, we say, in relation to what we need to do to help the residents of Warwickshire get out of the problems that we've experienced over the last few months. So I think it's a good, good paper. Happy to see it and happy to support it, Chair, as we move forward.
Okay, well, thank you all for your comments and your input. I think we need to pick up those comments to build on them. Gerry's alluded to the value considered on the working groups, on the cabinet working groups, which I think we all recognised as a good way of working. So that, I think, is something we will see repeated again. Timescales and next steps, Gerry, I was just going to move on to that. You know, and I do do just stress that we are still in a degree of uncertain times at the moment. So I think the work that's been done is really important. It's highlighted the areas that we need to focus on, how they might cross-match each other and where we can do some really valued work. But we're still not out of this. So I think this is, this is a step and we will need to move forward on it and reflect on it over the months and see how these numbers on reinfections go. Because I think, you know, we've only just this week seen some more shutdowns in areas. And we are not immune ourselves to increases in the reinfection rate. We've got a number of key moments ahead of us, not least the return of the universities, which will be times of concern and we need to get through that. But very much keep an eye on our recovery, on the four areas that we've got, the themes that have come out of it. As well as that, we've got a few other key dates, which again have been alluded to. One, there's the comprehensive spending review, there's Care Quality Commission, the fire inspection. And of course, there's the end of the year and our position with Europe. So many things that will have an impact on recovery and many things that we need to keep a close eye on. But I thank everyone for their comments. I thank, too, the really quick turnaround by members and staff in getting this recovery plan up and running. I'm going to move back to the recommendations on the front page. And I ask that Cabinet approve the council recovery plan included as a appendix A, subject to actions being costed and affordability assessed against the available investment funds with any ongoing implications being considered in the medium-term financial strategy refresh for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two onwards. And two, approve the next step for development of the council plan twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. And I ask that Cabinet might vote on that now, please. Raise your hands if you agree it. That is unanimously agreed and thank you all for your input and for your comments. Right, we can raise, let your hands go and we will move swiftly on to the annual governance statement twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. To Cam, this is you.
Thank you, Chair. There is a typo, Chair, on one point one. This report represents, it should be twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, just a little typo for amendment. But we will all be aware, this report comes to us annually. And the results of, and the timescales around it is the results of the review and the draft of the annual governance statement were considered and endorsed by the Audit and Standards Committee at its meeting on the twentieth of July. The draft of the AGS was also provided to the external audit for review in July, which had no updates. No updates were required. And is, and will also be presented with the financial statements for final endorsement by the Audit and Standards Committee at its meeting on the twenty eighth of September. And this is then going to full council, Chair, so, which is on the thirteenth of October. So it's really asking Cabinet to approve the draft before council.
Okay.
And I'm happy to take the questions, obviously.
So there is one hand up and that is Peter Button.
Historical hand.
Oh, is it an historical hand? Right, okay. Does anyone want to, want to say anything on this paper? Cam, it's back to you. You're muted now. You're muted.
So I move the recommendation, Chair, as laid out.
One moment, I've got Les who's come in, I think. Oh, everyone's muted. Les, are you asking a question or are you voting? I can't hear you, you're muted. Right, I think he, I think he is voting. Cam, just confirm the vote, please.
Okay, so just move the recommendation as laid out and everybody raise your hands. Thank you.
Thank you, and that's for the annual governance statement. And I can confirm that is agreed unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Moving on to item six is Capital Investment Fund twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Quarter two, Peter, please.
Thank you, Chair. Capital Investment Fund, it's one of those things that we kind of put into place a few, two or three years ago, which has been proved a great success for the county. This is a borrowing and a This is a borrowing and capital investment programme, which is based on our growth in this county, which has financed it. And this implements, itemises several, seven projects or eight projects that have been brought forward and seeking approval for us today. I'll go through them quickly. One is 3.165 for Kingsway Nursery and Children's Centre. There is a capital investment for Stratford, Nuneaton and Bedworth to add to the capital programme. There is a capital investment fund to the extension of small business capital grant scheme, which has been proved to be very successful also. That's 1.3 million. 3 million for the capital investment fund to the A3400 Birmingham Road Corridor. This is kind of a strange one in the fact that we've had to increase this one because of utilities not knowing where their stuff is. The number five is Stonebridge A446 Junction, which is kind of a part of the ongoing improvements for the green crossroads. Number six is the A429 Coventry Road Corridor Capital Programme. It's a condition, but this is in condition with that sale funding is secured from Warwickshire District Council, but we've been assured that that is forthcoming. 1.968 million for the measuring equipment to support evidence led decision making in tackling climate emergency and air quality. Something I think is important because we are kind of heading towards where our decision making processes is always going to be kind of made on data and evidence. This makes, gathers that evidence and data that we need. And then finally, authorisation, street communities to procure and enter into any agreements to give effect to the proposals on terms and conditions, et cetera, which is just kind of a comment. So they're the schemes. I'm very proud of this anyway, because it was brought in to kind of plug gaps that we couldn't find fundings from elsewhere. And looking at this very varied and broad spectrum of schemes that we've kind of got before us, it is doing exactly what it was designed to do. And as a result, I'm willing to take any questions.
Thank you very much. I've got Keith first, Keith, want to call.
Thank you. The last scheme sounds really interesting. I know we've done some work with people and cyclist detectors in some of our town centres now to try and get some data on what's going on. So very much supporting this. Just wanted to check that we're getting the buy in of the districts because I know Warwick's been very good at its air quality action plan and Nuneaton's always been struggled to get any motion on air quality and they turned their monitoring station off. So I hope we've got the buy in on the districts to actually work with them on these projects and monitoring what's going on. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else want to come in before I go back to Peter? I think that's it, Peter. I'm going back to you if you can respond to Keith, please.
Yes, Keith, I think you'll find that most of the districts in boroughs already do a fair bit of air quality in the middle of their towns. This is kind of adding to and on top of the data that they already provide. But most of them under monitoring is based on NO2 monitoring. Hopefully, there'll be more evidence supported from this equipment that we're buying for ourselves as well. So again, it's about data and big data is the big buzzword in local government and any other for business at the moment in terms of decision making processes. Other than that, I've got nothing more to add and I'd like to seek the approval of the Cabinet for these measures.
Keith, did you want to come back?
So just Peter kept using the word most, so I just wanted to check that Nuneaton Bedworth were included in this scheme, just explicitly.
As I understand it, yes.
Yeah. Keith, what we can do is get a detailed briefing of what this means for Nuneaton and Bedworth to you as well, if that's okay. Right, so I'm going to take you to all of the recommendations printed on page 143, all eight of them. And I'm not going to read them out because look, I'm large, Peter's been through them and they're quite long and we've still got a long agenda. So can I ask for those who agree the recommendations as printed on 143, please, to show? That is passed unanimously. Thank you. Move on to item seven, revenue investment funds 2020 to 2021, quarter one report. Peter, please.
Thank you, Chair. This is another investment fund that we set up. This was set up in February and it was falling into kind of four different categories. And if you look on bottom of page 159, turning over to the next page, you'll see those four categories, which is sustaining prevention fund, climate change fund, commercial fund and the place shaping and capital investment fund. And these four different funds kind of are there to kind of bring forward funding for these areas and their ambitions on those areas. The commercial fund and the place shaping fund is something I'm very kind of passionate about and keen to kind of get going. But as a result of that, these listed on these pages are the schemes that have come forward and we're seeking approval to give them the funding for these things. The first one is the art challenge for economy recovery. This project aims to enliven and provide creative ways to support safe movement, social distance and community confidence. Again, this is a COVID-19 response application and I'm keen to see this one go through. Employment assistance for the economy recovery, which is corporate board, is a place shaping and capital feasibility fund for employer assistance for economic recovery. This is helping these businesses that need kind of a leg up to kind of get over the crisis that we've got. We've got the marketing and promotion for economy, economic recovery. This fund is to support and enhance marketing campaigns to promote Warwickshire as an open and safe tourism destination. And then the tech challenge for economic recovery, this will be used for winning ideas from a competition to encourage projects and ideas to come forward that can help support retail and culture sectors with solutions to challenges they face as a result of the COVID crisis. And then there's the survive, sustain and grow, which is 295,000 quid, which is a place shaping and feasibility fund to project sponsor and assist a business survival programme, in short. So these are the kind of so called bids we've received for these funding that we've got forward. A lot of it, you'll notice, is COVID response in terms of getting recovery and Warwickshire communities back on their feet again. And as a result, I'm willing to take any questions for this new allocation of funding. Sorry, is he muted? Thank you, Leader. Can I say this exactly that we were right in creating these funds in our budget and the fact we've been able to move them to COVID support? Is it, I mean, we are well aware in public health and our officers about the effects of COVID on mental health. Art is a great medium for dealing with mental health and people's isolation and gives them confidence. So particularly welcome that and it's delighted that we, in the second one, are giving support to mental health wellbeing to businesses. And again, public health will take, has been keen to do this work in the wider remit really of public health to what is at times quite narrow and certainly at the moment. But I know our staff have put a lot of work into these projects and I'm really pleased that we're able to move them forward for the benefit of our communities and particularly mental health and certainly, as was mentioned earlier, the question of suicide and things like that. Everything we do to assist the mental health that people have been troubled by COVID and moving forward is exactly right. So very much welcome this and proves our right, the word, to put this funding in place. Thank you, Leader.
Thank you very much, Les. Gerry, you wanted to come in and then I've got Geoff Clark.
Yep, thank you. I sort of echo what Les has said about the arts. I remember some years ago, we did have some Mundingin Arts for Health at the time and that had to finish. But the outcome of that did prove very successful about that investment that was being made. So it is good to see that. And this is the same as the tech challenge for economic recovery. It's interesting that I've noticed quite a lot of people who are not, have changed from furlough into high tech jobs. And I know a few people that would welcome to see this, that Warwickshire's doing that.
Thank you. And Geoff Clark?
Thank you, Leader. Yeah, just a couple of points, an actual fact. Again, I welcome the fact that we've got the opportunity of these funds. I think we were right to put this forward in our budget as we rightly identify. It's identified, as I say, as coming forward is being really helpful, given the current climate. Particularly, I'm looking at the 3.14 in relation to the one to one business help as well. I think that will be essential as we try and help businesses come out of this. In Warwickshire, we are open for business and what we need to do is ensure that the businesses are able to access the help that they need to get the businesses up and running again. The other point, I would just go back one, is also in the promotions and saying that Warwickshire, our tourism industry is essential across Warwickshire, not just in Stratford, but also in Nuneaton with George Elliot and Kay. We have a number of attractions across Warwickshire and that's essential that we support and promote those across Warwickshire to ensure that that opportunity is not missed as we come out of COVID and people want to visit localish places. Because I must admit myself, I'm not going that far at the moment, but I am starting to venture out slowly. And I think this gives opportunity for people to access those areas. So welcome the report and welcome the fund that we've got there to enable us to do this. Thank you, Chair.
Thanks very much. Peter, just a little bit from me before I move back to you. This is exactly the sort of schemes that we should be doing and supporting, particularly now when we're trying to recover the economy, we're trying to get people back into our communities and we're trying, and you know, particularly Les to addressing issues of trying to help people with their mental health during times like this. We have an opportunity to try and recover and try and help business to just stabilise at the moment. And particularly these issues on the economy, I mentioned them at a meeting earlier this week with the FSB and they were very well received. So I think that there is a gratification that we are helping business, helping jobs. So back to you, Peter.
Thank you, Chair. I must point out, I was left out in my suit the other day for the first time to kind of, on a photo opportunity for a business that we kind of helped out, which was kind of a drone company, a bunch of techies that have set it, this company, with the idea of basically kind of moving kind of medical supplies by drones across. So I was more than pleased, one, to get out of the house and two, relieved the fire net was something that we were supporting business and getting back into work. So these are schemes in general, which are kind of heartening to see come forward for this funding we put back in February and also looking towards aiding a recovery from the COVID crisis. And I'm sure over the next few months, we're going to see quite a few other kind of bids for this fund in terms of what we will be needing to do to kind of make sure the recovery in Warwickshire is sustained. And on that point, I'd like to kind of seek the support of the Cabinet for this motion.
Wonderful. Little did we know in February what was before us. Okay, so can I invite votes, please, on recommendations one to three on page 159 on this item? Please. Now, oopsie, I'm the failure here. Right, we have a unanimous agreement for that report. Thank you all very much. I'm moving then on to customer service excellence standard reaccreditation. And this is item eight. And Cam, it's back to you.
Thank you, Chair. It gives me great pleasure to present this report, Chair, because it's a really good news story for the council. The customer service excellence standard was developed to offer public services a practical tool for driving customer focus change within their organisation. The standard itself tests in great depth those areas that are a priority for customers with particular focus on delivery, timeliness, information, professionalism and staff attitude. And, you know, all of this has been demonstrated within the report from our staff and our services. So it's a hat off to everyone really that's been involved because they've done a really fantastic job. Just to talk about the detail really, the reaccreditation took place over a four week period during January and that feels like such a long time ago, doesn't it? The assessor was on site for 10 days and the audit included an assessment of 20 customer journeys which were identified by the services in each directorate. The assessor held 14 sessions with services across the authority on several subjects from climate change to Brexit at the time. Do you remember that, the B word?
Coming back?
Oh, no, I know. I shouldn't have mentioned it, sorry. And one day off site undertaking telephone calls to customers, complainants and partners. So you can see just how much work goes into the whole process. So the next steps are also outlined within the report, but just to go over a few, the standard requires an annual review which checks compliance against the standard. Warwickshire County Council's annual review is scheduled for early February next year and this will be a six day remote assessment via Teams meetings. Who would have thought that, hey? And subject to Cabinet approval, Warwickshire County Council led officers within each directorate will develop a schedule for customer journeys for the assessor to review. So it is a lengthy process, but it's well worth doing because actually it gives us that overall governance and assurance piece that, you know, our customer journeys are working and what we're doing is going in the right direction, Chair. So I move the report as laid out, but I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you very much. I'm just looking to see if I've got anyone wanting to come in and I can't see anyone, Cam. But I do have to say, this is very good news. It's a great story. So well done. And I'm going back to you to finish off.
Thank you, Chair. No questions, therefore move the recommendations as set out on page 165 of the report. Therefore, can I have a show of hands from all Cabinet members, please?
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you. And just checking, we have full agreement that that is passed. Can I move us then on to item nine, which is still with you, Cam? This is the local digital declaration, page 211, if anyone wants to. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Forgive me if I get all excited over this because all things digital I always do, so I'll try and contain myself. But the Cabinet is presented with an opportunity for the council to sign up to set nationally agreed standards for the way we deliver services digitally. The declaration is an initiative which was and which is led by MHCLG and encourages local authorities to become signatories to a set of principles. Again, these are set out within the report. The initiative itself will bring several benefits, including the ability to bid for funding through local digital fund and opportunity to share good practice with other participating organisations. It's also, it would be good for me to say that our local partners, Coventry and Solihull and Rugby Borough Council are also signed up to this. And getting involved reflects the council's ambition to put digital delivery and data at the heart of how we deliver services set out in the council plan for 2025. at the heart of how we deliver services set out in the council plan for 2025. And as set out also, and we talked about within the 10 priorities of our recovery plan. So you can start seeing now how this will interlink and join up, you know, that thread going through the council. So it's really, yeah, the golden thread, that golden thread. So if approved today, Chair, our signatories, we will move to establish an officer team and identify and agree proposals for a first action project to be approved and overseen by the Data and Digital Board. Again, this is all within the report, Chair, and I'm happy to take questions and move the recommendation as laid out, Chair.
Fantastic. Thank you. Keith, Keith Condeco?
Thank you. I've looked at the five principles on the link and it's really good. I particularly like the one called fixing our plumbing. Because I, I, I think so much of digital stuff's coming so quickly and the plumbing doesn't cope in places. One question I've got, are we going to start with highways and that sort of area that's digital? Because that's an area where we have boroughs and councils, counties interfacing. And when I report things on the borough website, which I had to do last week, it said, this is going to generate a report to the county council. And then our localities team manager was told about this hedge that needed cutting, which is actually a borough council hedge. I knew it was a borough council hedge and I reported it on the borough council system. So a digital system that would actually work and be integrated for highways, borough and county would be absolutely marvellous. And I'd really like to beta test. The other thing I wanted to mention was open data. Because quite often we had a lot of stuff on watch as open data. Open data is really, really useful for people being to look up stuff without ever having to bother the council effectively. And it also allows apps developers to actually provide apps to help people. So if all our data's open and it's all digital and it's the same format in Warwickshire as in Coventry, young, bright, pecky people can start taking that data and thinking, oh, I can make an app to do X, Y or Z. That's the main point. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Geoff Clark?
Thank you, Leader. I should thank Keith for setting me up on this one. Yes, in actual fact, we have, in the last 12 months, changed our systems with our contractors to ensure that we're, we're able to, to connect digitally, to ensure that there is a smoother process in relation to our repairs and processing of payments and things. Going on from that, there is an intention to have an interactive response for members of the public so that when they do report issues and problems on the highway, on the highway network, that will also have a feedback opportunity as well as we develop it. So that there are intentions there. We are pleased to be able to do that. It's going to be beneficial for the public to be able to know that, you know, that somewhere else has been reported and it's been responded to. So that's, that's good news coming forward, Chair, within highways anyway.
Great. It's a really good paper, Cam. Thank you very much for bringing it. And it's, it's great that we're innovating the digital connections more and more. And, and of course, there's a fine balance between what we do on the more normal types of connections. So people picking the phone up, wanting to do all of that. And there'll be less of those and more of the digital. And there's, you know, there's a natural sway. But we still definitely need to cope with the communications for those who don't have digital connections. And, and that will be all the more important as we're moving more on to digital. So if you see what I mean, I'm saying it rather badly, but it's, it's how you ensure that you've kept that traditional method whilst you're also innovating. But exciting.
It is an exciting paper and, and you know, this brings in a whole host of opportunities right across the council, not just for Warwickshire County Council, but also our boroughs and districts. Keith spoke about, you know, being able to report a hedge. It could be that we could have one system that reports all things highways, all things hedges in one, you know, portal. So it came in. Don't get me all excited because, you know, I have to contain myself. But, you know, we could share data again between districts and boroughs when it comes to, you know, our health departments, adult social care. You know, the list is endless, you know, public health, you know, our fire service has already been using some of our systems in order to, our health systems in order to, you know, pick patients up to and from hospital and home. So there is a whole host of things that's going on and there's a lot of projects that we can look at and improve and improve our services and make access easy for our residents, no matter where they are. But I'd like to just, just point out, Keith, there's also some first actions potential in appendix, which is on page 215 of the report. And that kind of starts bringing in some ideas about the work. But we'll certainly pick up on what you've mentioned as well.
I'm afraid, I'm afraid you've got Peter too excited. He's put his hand up. Otherwise you'd have got away with it.
All right. Just, just, just one question. Does this mean that those who used to hide behind the data protection act in terms of kind of the connectivity with data exchange, we are basically through this process kind of bypassing a lot of that, what used to be a blockage?
No, in a nutshell. No, because the data protection act still stands. So, you know, you still have to abide by the rules in terms of data protection. But it does mean that we, as councils, and that is not just us as one council, but as all our districts and boroughs could share data when it comes to services, certainly of delivery of. Okay. Heard that help. Sorry, Pete.
I quit whilst you're ahead, actually, Cam. You were doing very well.
It just makes the technology safer, that's all. But I'm going to stop there because I am excited about it and I move the recommendation as set out, Chair.
Thank you very much. We've got two recommendations on page 211. Can you vote now if you want to take these through? And it seems we all do. So thank you for that. That is agreed. And I'm going to now go to page 217, which is Colin. It's you. And this is the Home to School Transport Policy Paper.
Thank you, Leader. This is quite a lengthy document, but in actual fact, what it does is make a very small but important change to our policy. But it requires the whole policy to be there presented to you along with the consultation text. What this does is relaxes one of the changes we made a couple of years ago. We said you will only get entitled to school transport to your nearest school if your nearest school is beyond three miles. That created problems particularly in the rural areas with some of the catchment areas of schools also being included when someone's address. So what we're saying now is you can apply to either your nearest school or to your catchment area school. And whichever you choose to do so, if it succeeds, if it exceeds the three-mile limit, you will get school transport, whichever one it is. So that will hopefully make life more easy in some of the rural areas where we've had issues in the last couple of years. And that's all this report does. So I have to take questions on it.
Looking for hands, of which I see none, but I have to say I have experienced the problems that this initial proposal came. I have a community that's, you know, rural communities, it's very difficult. You've got catchment areas which aren't, might be by a whisker further away than their priority schools or vice versa. And it's been very difficult for one or two parents, caused great distress. And I am hugely grateful that we have seen a pragmatic approach and we have amended this. It will make parents' lives much, much better. So thank you. No other hands up. Can we move to the vote then? So I'm going to just ask those on, those to vote for the two recommendations on page 277. If you want to agree this, please show now. And that again is unanimous support, Colin. Thank you. Right, we are getting through this. So item 11 is the establishment of a framework agreement for children's therapeutic services and interventions. Geoff Morgan, and this is page 277.
Thank you very much, Izzy.
You've just got muted, Geoff. I'm not quite sure how that happened, but, yeah, thank you.
You'll all no doubt be aware that Warwickshire is the lead authority in ACE Adoption Central England, which is the regional authority, and that encompasses Coventry, Solihull, Worcestershire and now Herefordshire. This has been operating since the 1st of February 2018. During that time, over 1,200 applications have been received for, to the government's Adoption Support Fund with a value of over 2.3 million for therapeutic interventions to support adopted children and adoptive families. It's an easy mistake to make and I think I kind of assumed that when I came into this business, that adopted children present fewer problems than looked-after children. But they will all have experienced trauma of some sort from their birth parents and this can manifest itself in, in different, different ways, providing significant problems for parents, particularly in regard to forming relationships and trusting adults. The paper asks Cabinet to give permission for officers to set up a framework contract for use by all of the local authorities within ACE to seek and commission therapeutic services and interventions. This would replace the old Coventry City Council's JETS framework, which ended on the 18th of August. Warwickshire ourselves, as the leading authority, would be responsible for entering into contracts through the framework. The advantages of a framework contract are those pertaining to any framework. Quality control and assurance, improved information prior to agreements and a boost to the supply side of the market, in this case, therapeutic services. The specific advantages of this are listed in paragraph three of the report, which, which are before you. And I'd just like to say that it is one intention of the framework to help increase the number of therapeutic service providers in the region. Now, while I said at the beginning that this is for adopted children, it is also the intention to make this support available to adults and family members who enter into a special guardianship order for looked-after children. This is a progress that's sadly been neglected hitherto and which we in Warwickshire intend to make greater use of in, in the future. As a grandparent, I feel quite strongly about this. There are no financial implications in this since there is no automatic guarantee of any level of spend to members of the framework and any liabilities will be shared across ACE and its local authorities. On that basis, I'm happy to take any, any questions, Leader. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. A very clear presentation. Dave Parsons?
Thank you, Chair. Really to comment that I wanted to make, Geoff. I'm really pleased to hear that this applies to special guardianship orders. I have all in my, in my family, as it were, and it's, it's an area that has been neglected, I think, in terms of adoption. And it really should be automatic that when it applies to adoption, it applies to special guardianship because they are so similar. But this is, that was good news. So I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dave. Yeah. A very good report and a very good step forward, Geoff. Back to you to just seal it off.
Thank you very much. Yes, Dave, I, you know, we are in, we are in agreement on this. Old guy's rule. Okay. It, it's, it's an interesting point that the number of adopted children have actually gone down a bit recently by, I think, around about 7%. And I think that reflects gradually the increasing use that's being made of special guardianship orders. So thank you for the support on that. On that basis, I'd like to ask my Cabinet colleagues if they would support the recommendations as laid out.
Thank you. We are voting now. And if you want to see this go through, please raise your hand. One, two, yep, we have unanimous support, Geoff, for your paper. Thank you very much, everyone. And the next paper is also with you, paper 11. That's the, sorry, that was paper 11. Paper 12, which is the Warwickshire Foster Carer Association.
Thank you. This is what it says on the tin. It's a foster carers association for Warwickshire. We used to have one in the past and then it fell into disuse for a while, but it's got itself going again. It's got its own Facebook page with 78 members, covering 57 households, and now we want to support its development. The purpose of the Foster Carers Group Association is to improve partnerships between foster carers, our fostering team and other partners. And we are proposing to establish it as a charity so that it can more easily raise funds to support our activities and events. They already run coffee mornings, they have email groups and social, social events, et cetera. We would, in, in, in order to really give it a boost, give it a sort of a turbo charge, we will be investing £25,000 from the fostering team budget over two years to get this going. One crucial role of the association is to encourage potential foster carers to come forward and to provide them with support. And recently, we've seen a real increase in applicants to become foster carers. We've had 25 new applicants this year, which is, you know, which, which is, which is great news. The benefits are laid out in more detail at paragraph 4.4 of the report. And to finish, I'll just give you one quote from a member who says, "It's a great place to get help, support or just a friendly ear for a chat." And on that basis, I'd like us to go forward, but I'm happy to take any questions before we do that.
I am just looking, I think another, you know, highly commendable report. Absolutely the right intentions. I've got Pam Williams. Pam, do come in.
Good afternoon. Yes, thank you for this. This is going to be a great step forward for foster carers and a great support to them all. They have actually used the technology that we have available for them now to go forward to support each other. But I think this investment will be, will pay dividends in the future for all our foster carers and the families. Thank you very much for bringing it. I ask the Cabinet to support it.
Good. Thank you. Yeah. Right, I think we're back to you, Geoff.
Okay. Thank you very much for that, Pam. Thank you for your support. And now I'd like to ask my colleagues in the Cabinet to support the recommendations as laid out.
Right, just, that's, that's unanimous support, Geoff. Thank you for that paper. Okay. Right. Agenda item 13 is proposed, proposal to establish specialist resource provision at Paddock Primary School Rugby. Colin, this is your paper, if you'd like to introduce it.
Thank you, Leader. This relates to a school that I think's in Gerry's division. He may want to comment on it. It's an issue came to Cabinet a couple of months ago to agree in principle to the idea of putting one of these support provisions into Paddock School and subsequently... And subsequently, there was a consultation on it. This report contains that consultation result. And he's asking Cabinet to agree to this provision going ahead. It provides, certainly in the first instance, space for about 10 children. It may come to more later. This is in the context, this will be our eighth, I think, provision of this type. We are looking for more. In fact, my latest information is we have 134 places that we could easily identify for children in other schools. So this is part of a programme, I think, or at least a part of a strategic programme for how we can develop even more of these across Warwickshire in the future. This is a primary level and this is looking at the very earliest years of children in primary schools and giving them support within specialist education units. And at the same time, trying to integrate them where practically, and it'll vary from child to child, into the mainstream, excuse me, into the mainstream schooling. And if that proves successful, then the child will graduate into a supportive position within mainstream schools. And if after a period it's deemed necessary, the child would have to go into a specialist school. But this is an initial stage to see how we can integrate children. The very earliest stage is a primary education into mainstream schooling through this sort of support. And I do commend it to colleagues and I would welcome Gerry's comments, please.
So thanks very much for introducing it. Can Gerry Rudhouse in first? I'm just checking, Geoff, if you wanted to come in or if that's an historic hand.
Sorry, it's a legacy hand.
Okay. Right. Well, Gerry, it's over to you.
Thanks, yeah. Thanks for that, Colin. Yeah, I mean, within the community, there's still issues about traffic and all those particular bits and pieces that you'll be well aware of. But actually, this provision, it is a good provision. I've spoken at some length prior to lockdown and everything else with the head because, of course, there were issues about the contractor and asbestos and God knows what else on site as well. So I think the head will be pleased now that this is starting to roll forward and getting going within there. But the report does reflect the usual stuff about pick up and drop off. But as it states in there, actually, people will be coming at a different time. And though, because we have another special school just across the road, which is private as well, they will come at different times as well with their taxes. So really, it doesn't matter what time you come and go, it's just mayhem, really. So, but coming back to the fundamental bit about the children and what's been tried here for the 10 children, I think it's right and has to be, you know, I support it.
Thanks, Gerry. Peter Butler.
Thank you, Chair. I must point out kind of a small prejudice, inasmuch as my daughter-in-law works and will also work in this unit. But this unit has got my support in one respect. It gives a more localised approach towards SEND provision. And if you can get more localised in your provision, one, you're not transporting children of a disadvantaged nature all across the county and sometimes outside of the county. One, that can only be better for the children in the long run. Two, it's certainly better on our finances at Warwickshire County Council when it comes to transport. So, yeah, on those points, I'm all in favour of this unit. Thank you.
I haven't got any more hands up, so I'm going to go back to you, Colin.
Yes, thank you, Leader. And thank you, Gerry, as well for your comments. Yes, clearly the traffic was going to be a concern and the staggered timings between the school and the special unit, I think should help, but we'll have to see how it goes. This is part of a bigger picture. And I'm hoping that we can paint that picture more clearly to you all about what the strategic future might look like for this sort of provision, building in as well the Pairs Centre and other things, how we will deal with that in the future. So watch this space. But in the meantime, I would ask for your endorsement and support on this recommendation, please.
Thank you. So I'm just looking for hands up if you would like to support the recommendation as on 297. And, oh, yeah, Colin, that's it. You've got support unanimously for that. Thank you. Right. We have one more report in the public papers, and that is the Local Government and Social Care Ombudsman. So this is the annual review. And Cam, can I go to you, please? You might be muted.
Unmuted, Chair.
Wonderful.
So recommendation before us is that the Cabinet receive and comment on the annual review and summary of upheld complaints issued by the local government and social care ombudsman for the financial year 2019-2020, of which we received 47 complaints and inquiries in relation to Warwickshire County Council. Most of these were in relation to adult social care and education children's services. Of the 46 decisions made by the ombudsman in 2019-2020, only eight were the subject of a full investigation, six of which were upheld by the ombudsman and two were not upheld. This was a reduction from the previous financial year 2018-19. And this is relatively low compared to the other similar sized local authorities. In addition, no formal reports were issued against the council in 2019-2020. It's also important to say the service area with the largest number of upheld complaints was adult social care, where there were three upheld complaints. The service area with the second highest number of upheld complaints, as already said, was the second, was education services. In respect of the remedies in 2019-2020 to put right upheld complaints, the ombudsman has found that Warwickshire County Council complied with 100% of the agreed remedies. And this is also outlined in the letter on the last page, which I believe is page 307. So in summary, the 2019-2020 outcomes are positive and an improvement to the previous year. The cases, however, are very fact specific and we don't know yet what the impact of COVID has been. And the delayed complaints, which are now starting to come through, which will have on 2020-21 outcomes. So the current position is to the end of August, there has been one upheld complaint in relation to children's and families. But other than that, Chair, this has been a really good report, a really good outcome for Warwickshire County Council. And I'm happy to move the report unless there are questions coming through.
Thanks. No, there is one. Andy Crump. Unless that's a legacy.
That's a legacy. I'm sorry.
Are there any comments?
Seems to be a lot of old hands today, Izzy.
Oh dear. Oh dear. Yeah. Cam, always, I mean, you know, perfection is no complaints that are upheld. But, you know, you should always strive for perfection. But I think it's a very, very commendable report.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you. As there's no questions, Chair, may I ask colleagues to vote on the recommendation, please?
Thank you. And would you show now? You have got full Cabinet support, Cam.
Thank you, Chair.
Thanks very much, everyone. Right. We thank you for all tolerating this long agenda and we're nearly at the end. I do now have to move the words that members of the public be excluded from the meeting for the items mentioned below on the grounds that their presence would involve the disclosure of exempt information as defined in paragraph three of part one of Schedule 12A of the Local Government Act 1972. Can we agree that? Please vote. I believe that's, again, unanimous agreement. And Paul, I will wait for you to tell me when I can proceed, if I may.